Good evening. We would like to call this meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. I'll turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Present.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Meredith. Our invocation, we'd like to invite those who would like to participate in our invocation to stand, and our invocation will be given by Administrative Pastor Richard Felton of the Kingman First Southern Baptist Church. And then afterwards, I have asked our Vice Mayor to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bow your heads to me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God that loves us and who is with us in this very room. You never leave us or forsake us. Your grace has brought us safe thus far, and your grace will lead us home. We thank you for making each one of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen of this city and every city in your image, with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for the callings you have given each of us to be good stewards of your creation. I thank you tonight for those, your servants, our mayor, vice mayor, city managers, city staff, and city council. I give thanks for the way they have dedicated themselves to serve the people of this community. Every person here tonight comes carrying burdens, carrying joy and hope, trusting that you, God, can hold us together, help us to trust you more, more than our fears and our wounds and even our accomplishments. Keep us in your everlasting arms tonight. We pray, Lord, that you will be glorified tonight through the decisions of this council. We pray that you have the eyes to see how the common good in our community is upheld when we listen and respond to those most vulnerable among us. May your truth be revealed, may your light shine brighter, and may the voices of those that have been missed or forgotten in the community be heard tonight. We pray for wisdom, for strength, and for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens, even if it's not the most popular. May we put the interest of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. Lord, thank you again for this council, our mayor and vice mayor, our city staff, our first responders, our hospital staff, and all those who work to make this place we call home such a wonderful city. For it's in your name, Jesus, that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please bring in the pledge of allegiance to our living country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And of course, we would like to welcome everybody who is here in chamber tonight, those who might be participating via the Internet and, of course, watching our YouTube channel. Number one on our agenda is awards and recognition. Carl, we don't have our statement that we have concerning executive session. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry. I'm blind tonight. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda from the, any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Number one, awards recognition. One A, City of Kingman Risk Management, P E P P slash V I P Award Recognition. And turn some time over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Watkins. I'm actually going to turn it over to our Human Resources Director, Krista.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mayor and council. Good evening. I'm very proud to be here tonight to share the recent recognition that we've received from the Industrial Commission of Arizona for our involvement in work with ADOSH's program, the Public Entity Partnership Program, also known as PEP. I'd first of all like to call up some safety committee members who have worked very tirelessly with this program, if you would indulge me. Any of our safety committee members, please come forward. I've got David Garcia, I've got Glenn Proudfoot, I've got Wes Pinkart, Susan McKee, Chris Fur, Bailey Lewis. These are all various team members of our safety committee, and they have served and are a part of our hardworking team. I think there's even, I don't know, police officers. I know that Brian Zaff is a former member. So anyways, I really am grateful for all this support that we have. The Industrial Commission of Arizona, ICA, has been working collaboratively with stakeholders and the community to promote consultation department within the Arizona Department of Occupational Safety and Health. That's known as ADOSH. The consultation division within ADOSH allows businesses and work sites to become compliant with OSHA standards before an accident occurs without fear of being cited for violations identified and evaded. In Arizona, the consultation services have advanced to the next level, allowing public entities to receive the benefit of ADOSH consultation services. Now, public entities can enter into the Public Entity Partnership Program and take the next step in workplace safety. In March of 2023, Public Works Assistant Director Jack Pointy, Public Assistant, Parks Assistant Superintendent, sorry, Matthew Goldar, and Safety and Risk Managers Manager Susan McKee met with an ADOSH representative to learn how the City of Kingman could participate in the program to elevate our safety culture, reduce our risks, and improve our employee safety programs. We applied and were accepted into the PEP program. On May 21st, 2023, we held a special health and safety committee meeting with city leadership, as well as the full membership of the Health and Safety Committee, where we committed to the benefits and responsibilities of the program. ADOSH consultants and a compliance assistance officer were assigned to help the city reach our agreed-upon goals. We have been busy with and conducted several official inspections so far, including the Hilltop Wastewater Treatment Plant, Public Works Facilities, the airport, and most recently, golf and parks. The commitment from our city's team members has been phenomenal. I'm very proud of the work our Safety and Risk Team is doing, and especially commitment of all the effort of the employees who support this Health and Safety Committee. Thank you all. Our compliance specialist, Joanna Martels, nominated us for the recognition for our efforts. Susan McKee attended the presentation in Phoenix on May 13th and received this flag and recognition. You guys want to share the flag? I'm going to read the statement that she used to nominate us for this award. ADOSH is very pleased to recognize the City of Kingman for their notable efforts in the PEP program. The City of Kingman stands out for many reasons. The main one being their unwillingness to accept anything but the very best when it comes to the safety and health of their employees and also the public as a whole. They have a very good reason for their commitment to providing the very best because in a town like Kingman, where everybody pretty much knows everybody, safety becomes a very personal thing. It could be your neighbor, your friend, your relative, or someone you've known since second grade, whose safety has now become your responsibility. And the Safety and Risk Management Department of Kingman is certainly up to the challenge. What they may lack and the resources a large metropolis may have the benefit of, they more than make up for with expertise, creativity, and pure gumption. The words determination and perseverance are certainly within the City of Kingman's vocabulary, and a quote by Safety and Risk Manager Susan McKee may sum it up the best. Little by little, a little becomes a lot, and the City of Kingman has shown that they have indeed done a lot. So, thank you very much.
I think so. I think we should have a photo. If it's all right, if you have council with you, I think we need to turn around so show everybody in the audience the flag. Counsel?
I'm not sure. I think probably okay.
We're good?
Annie's actually a committee member as well. Thank you very much.
Once again, thanks to all of you.
Appreciate it.
For taking.
Thank you.
Safety is up most important.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I often don't get to talk about the risk side.
Item number two on our agenda, Call to the Public, Comments from the Public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Tonight, first, we have Ms. Peggy Ellis. She'd like to come forward, please.
I'm vertically challenged. Can you hear me? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Since I only have three minutes, I'll talk as fast as I can. What disturbs me a lot is a lot of these water construction things. I live in an area where there's new construction going on. There is water leaks here, water leaks there. Just yesterday, there was a water leak off of Club Avenue, and the Elks had to close their social quarters for this. I'm concerned about this because I have myself seen water flow, and I call up whoever I can. In some cases, it ends up being 911 because nobody wants to do anything about it. I guess if it gets that bad, we raise the rates. So I'm concerned about that, and I have heard of cases, not in this city, but in others, where these faulty workmanship from the very beginning end up being passed on to all of the taxpayers. That's my biggest concern. My other concern is that, I understand about inflation, but the thing is, inflation begets inflation, and I'm not going to go into detail on that because we see it all the time. What I would like to propose is that if water has to be increased to keep up with this digging, that digging, whatever, why not offer some discount programs to individuals that qualify? For example, the city, the electric department has something that they offer everyone, whether you're low income or not, that's called water use, excuse me, electric usage at the time of the day. I live alone, and an example in my case is that I don't need to have my trash picked up twice a week. Sometimes not even once a week. How much does it cost? Would you figure out the truck, the gas, the employees? Why not allow certain people like me to have a little bit of a discount by just picking up once a week? If we need it more, then maybe we could call up and say, hey, I need it more, or take it to the landfill. Something, just something to offer us, as opposed to just the proverbial, raise the rates, raise the rates. I guess that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I, you know, I feel that there should be some accountability when it comes to workmanship, digging, seven o'clock in the morning. I heard some digging, so I go over there and I say, what's going on? Oh, we're fixing a water leak. Okay, that is happy, happening more and more often. Why? Was the work not done the first time? And why is that, why are these expenses passed on to us? Ultimately, they are. So I guess that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Jim St. Pierre.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. I really wasn't planning to speak, but I am sitting there, I was thinking about this and just wanted to challenge the council a little bit. And that's on communication back to the city, to your constituents. I've been to many council meetings. I know some of you personally. And I hear people like myself come up and bring a situation or a concern or whatever, a pie in the sky Santa list. I don't know. But they come in on a Tuesday night, they take time out of their day, and they present something to the council, and we never hear anything back. And I kind of liken it to the kid going to his dad and saying, I want a new bike. Okay, we'll talk about it. We'll talk about it. But he never gets any answer, and it's frustrating. I myself brought a situation eight months ago or so about a stop sign on Dakota Avenue. Several other people have brought that same subject up. Never heard a word back, nothing. And that gets very frustrating. I'm an adult. I'm a big boy. I can take no. And I finally cornered a council member, and I says, what's going on? They explained it to me, you know, what would have to happen to get a stop sign put in that corner. Okay, I can accept that. I can see why in today's budget world, we're not going to jump into doing all sorts of surveys and stuff for a stop sign. But those are the things that we, as people here, when we bring, no matter how silly it sounds, when we bring something to you guys, would love to hear something back, whether it's even a blurb in the next minutes. Gee, we can't do this. I don't know. I challenge you all to find a way to do that better because that's one of the things that I do hear from people when I talk to them. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. St. Pierre.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I know, I know we can't address him directly, but I, too, would like updates on what has been brought to Call to the Public because every time there's a meeting, I jot copious notes, and I would, I would like to have some kind of summary. So is there something that we can do at a future meeting, like maybe once a month, that we can update on the calls to the public or just get a staff report or something to that nature? Because I, I too would like to be updated.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, absolutely. We can, we can do that a number of ways, either through a report at city council meeting on various topics that were brought up at Call to the Public. I think some of the challenge will be determining which, which items brought forward at Call to the Public is, are things that apply to city. Call to the Public, we can, we allow comments on all sorts of topics. So we can, we can work with, with council and find the best way to bring that back to you, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Item number three, Consent Agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counselors, do we have anything that we need to pull from our consent agenda and discuss? Vice Mayor? It's just happened. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
I, I would like to pull item K.
Item K, okay. We'll pull that one. Anything else? Okay, can we have a motion then approving, on our consent agenda, items 3A through L, with the exception of K?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve A through L.
Thank you. We have that motion. A second?
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vice Mayor, item K.
So I wanted to pull this item just because I know that the dollar amount is in the backup, but I wanted it to be out into the public. So I just wanted to make sure that the dollar amount gets in there. Tim, do you have that, that number?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I do. The total amount for that is $149,863.05.
Okay, and can you just summarize the, the need for this, please?
Absolutely. This, this chlorine room is part of the Hilltop Wastewater Treatment Plant, and it's the same equipment that's been there since the construction of the plant, and it's nearing its, the end of its life. This, and I could probably have Public Works Director explain what the, the equipment does specifically better, but the equipment's needed for the, the treatment process, but this also helps protect our employees while they're out working on, on the, that. I'll let Rob explain it a lot better.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, this is part of the treatment process at the end of the wastewater treatment, train there, rechlorinate and dechlorinate the water. It's, it kills any wee beasties left in there, basically. Disinfects the water. It's the original equipment, chlorines, chlorine gas, in this case, is very corrosive, tends to eat away at the equipment, and it's enclosed in a separate room to protect the employees. If there's a leak, they can't gain access to that room. It has equipment to vent the room, but a lot of this is safety equipment. An original equipment that went in in 2010, 2011, that's just reached the end of its life. I can try to answer any questions.
Strong, thank you. Actually, you just answered a question I was going to have. How old is that, is that plant? So somewhere around?
Yeah, it was 2010, 2011 when the plant was completed.
Vice Mayor?
That's all I needed. Thank you. I appreciate that, Rob.
Thank you.
Mr. Owen, appreciate it.
I'll make a motion.
Do we approve item 3K on our consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll second. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, Old Business for a Public Hearing and Adoption of Ordinance Number 1955, Increasing Water Base Rates, Volume Rates, and Capital Renewal Fees. This is a public hearing to consider adopting Ordinance Number 1955, increasing the water lease rates, volume rates, and capital renewal rates. The proposed fee increase would result in a 26.5% increase to water base and volume rates, and a 20% increase to water capital renewal base rates. The proposed rates are the results of a study completed by staff and our consult, and our consultant to ensure projected revenues are sufficient to fund the projected expenses and to meet industry standard cash reserves. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance Number 1955. And we have Tina Mullin, our Finance Director.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and council members. Tonight, we have with us Kevin Burnett of Wildan Financial Services. He has been working with us for quite a few months now to update our water rate study. And as you recall, at the March and the April meeting, council did adopt a notice of intent to consider a water rate increase. Tonight is the public hearing process for that, for that rate increase. And Kevin will provide a brief presentation. It will cover the purpose and the background of the water systems, financial plan update. It will also look at the different options for the revenue and ultimately, the rate increase. And then also provide a comparison of our proposed rate to some of the cities in our region. And then ultimately, we will answer any questions that you and the public may have. So with that, I'll hand the microphone over to Kevin.
Thanks, Tina. Good evening, or afternoon, I guess it's still technically. As Tina said, I'm Kevin Burnett. I've been working with staff for a while now and have been before you all before as well. So I'll give a little bit of a background, a refresher of why we undertook this study, what the revenue increases that were calculated are, the proposed rates, and then, as Tina said, get into some comparisons. So the purpose of the study, so we reevaluated the financials since the 2022, 2023 study. When we look at these financial plans, we often look at them as living, breathing things. They're not static. They're not carved in stone. So as we progress through the years and through the financial plan, revenues change, growth patterns change, expenses change. So staff, as we recommended, has taken a deeper dive and looked into the financials to make sure that there's the adequate funding for both current and future operating maintenance and capital expenses, and that you're meeting the minimum reserve levels. We'll talk about them in a couple of slides. And then update the rate adjustments as appropriate to make sure that you're generating the revenue that the financial plan dictates that we need. So since the last study took place, the last formal study, we've seen some increases in operations and maintenance costs. Specifically, electricity has gone up, natural gas, and then equipment costs have as well. So if you look at the chart there, so the top line is the current update, so that's what our costs are projected right now. And then the line below that is the prior study. So you can see the percent change in operations and maintenance expenses just since 2223. So anywhere between 4.5% and almost 6.5%, depending upon the fiscal year that we're looking at. At the same time, as our expenses were going up, our revenues came in a little bit lower than we had previously anticipated. The growth projections that we had in the model didn't come to fruition. So we've got new growth projections right now. And on the one hand, the lower growth rate is good for the long-term sustainability of the system. You're not putting as much wear and tear on it with less growth, but at the same time, in the immediate point in time, less growth means less revenue. So we've got expenses going up, and our revenues came in a little bit lower than we had projected. So the financial plan that has been recommended and that council directed us to move forward with was a combination on the operation side, a combination of rate increases and a $1 million loan from the wastewater fund. So we're anticipating that $1 million loan will take place in this upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 2425. And then that loan would get repaid over the next 10 years at approximately $120,241 a year, beginning in fiscal year 2026. So not this upcoming year, but the following year. On the capital renewal side, we're only looking at rate increases to, to meet the capital needs going forward. In looking at the operating fund, so again, we've got a similar chart of where we were at previously when we undertook the study in 2223 and where we're at today. So it's following the same pattern as we had before, where there are higher rate increases in the early years, and then they tail off as we progress through the next five years. But you do see that, with the exception of fiscal year '28, the, the current rates projections are higher than where we were just two years ago. The bottom graphic there shows our, our reserves. So this is what, the target reserve is what the, the water utility has. It's making sure that there's enough cash in the bank that we can meet our expenses on an, on an ongoing basis. Should there be any emergencies come up that we're not anticipating, we have cash in the bank to take care of those. So you can see the dark blue bar is what the target reserve is, and the lighter blue bar is what the actual reserves are. So each year, each of these five years with these increases that we've proposed, we have a pretty good matching of what our target is and what our actuals are. I will also point out that fiscal year '25 and '26, the bars are lower, and then they jump up in fiscal year '27. That's a reflection of a decision that was made between staff and my firm, where the target reserve for the first two years is at 45 days. That's at the lowest end of, of the industry standard. The industry standard is anywhere between 45 and 90 days of reserves. So for the first two years, we have it set at the, at the bottom end at 45 days. And then you can see in 2027, it jumps up, and we're at the 60-day mark now. So the decision was made to be a little bit lean in the first couple of years to mitigate the rate increases. They would need to be that much higher if we were trying to target a 60-day reserve right off the bat, so we're planning on easing into that in a couple of years. We're looking at the, the rates themselves now. So when we did the last study, we did a much deeper dive into things. We looked at what it costs to serve each customer class. We did some realignment of rates, some realignments of goals. We shifted costs around to make sure that each customer class was paying their proportionate share. This time around, we took a higher-level approach. So what you're seeing here are rates reflected on an across-the-board manner. So that 26.5% increase that we showed, that applies across the board for fiscal year '25 to all the rates. So all these base charges have been increased by that rate increase. And we're proposing the same thing for the outer years as well, '26 through, through '29. Normally, you would take it the deeper dive, the cost of service, every five years or so. It's only been a couple of years since we last did it. So that's why we opted for the higher-level approach this time around. Similar on the, on the volume rate side. So we saw some more changes to the rate structure, as I said, when we did the deeper dive last time around. This time around, much like the monthly base charges, on the volume side, we're also looking at just an across-the-board increase to all the rates. On the capital renewal fund, as I said, so this was just strictly a rate increase option. We didn't look at any borrowings or, or anything of that nature for this fund. You can see the current update, we're at 20% increases every year for the next five years. It tacks pretty closely to the prior study. The prior study did have a 25% in 2029, so we have come down a little bit on that, but the other years are the same. the other years are the same. And then you can see what our actual reserves are. So we're drawing down on our reserves over the next five years, even with those increases that we have projected. On the capital renewal fee, so again, the last study, we took a deeper dive, made some changes and refinements to how the capital renewal fee is assessed to our customers. This time around is strictly the across-the-board approach. With that, we put together some customer impact. So we've got a low-volume user, average user of the system, and a high residential customer user of the system. So you can see what their current is. So a low-volume user at 3,000 gallons would have a current bill of $21.81 a month. It would go up to $27.31 under the proposed rate, so a difference of about $5.50. Your average customer would see an increase of about $6.77 a month. And then the high-volume user using 25,000 gallons a month would see about a $17.46 a month increase. As Tina said, we also took a look at what some of your surrounding communities are. I caution this with the graph, that this just tells you what the bills are. It doesn't tell you how they're running their system. It doesn't tell you whether or not their water utility is being subsidized by the general fund, if they're a private utility, if they're a public utility, if they have impact fees, what level those impact fees might be. So the point here is, it's not a direct apples-to-apples comparison, but at the same time, everybody wants to know how they compare to their neighbors. So you can see Kingman's current at the left end of the graph, at $26.63. You can see the average there is about $35. And then Kingman proposed, you'd be a little bit under the average, but you are moving to the right of Prescott Valley and Bullhead City. At the same time, the rates that we've got reflected here are the rates that generate the revenue needed to operate the system in Kingman. The rates that we're presenting here aren't what it's going to cost to run and operate the system in Lake Havasu City or in Flagstaff. They're specific to the cost to operate the system here in Kingman. So. The next steps that we have, so as Tina mentioned, this is the public hearing tonight. So we're looking to council to either approve or disapprove the new rates. If they're approved, then we would adopt the ordinance to increase rates, and then per state statute, the rates can't go into effect until 30 days after the adoption. So that would put us at July 5th, since July 4th is a holiday. We pushed it to the 5th. So that's all I have. So happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, first, it's good to see you in person.
Thank you.
As opposed to via Zoom. Council, any questions for Kevin from Wilden and Associates?
I have a couple. I'm not sure if they're for you, Mr. Burnett, or for Ms. Moline, so I see she's close. So on the operating fund, where you showed the slide fiscal year 25, and then jumping up to 26. So why choose that particular year to jump? I know you wanted to lessen the increase. Why 26 over like 27 or 28? Because the less we jump up, the less of an impact it has on our rate-paying customers. Is that correct? Okay. So why choose to jump up in 26?
So that was based on city staff's recommendation. So the 45 days, as Kevin shared, is the very minimum on our enterprise funds. And so we didn't want to do that for too many years, which is why we did it for the first few years. We did it last year. It's proposed for 25 and 26, and we're hoping to get to that 60-day level by fiscal year 27, which is still in the middle of what the standard is. But it can certainly be changed based on whatever council's direction is.
So my question is, if we changed it from 26 to 27, what does that do to the rates? What kind of an impact does that have? Does it make much of an impact in pushing that out to fiscal year 27?
My guess is it will make an impact in fiscal year 26's rates, and then fiscal year 27 will see the bigger increase.
Okay. All right. My other question, and I believe this is for you, Ms. Moline, the discounts. We had a question asked of discounts. Is there anything available to the public for mitigating the cost of their water rate?
So I guess the first thing, in the rates themselves, right? We have the very lowest tier, which is what we consider that lower-end, lower-user tier. And that rate is already, just in the volume rate, it's lower than what our rates were before we even underwent this study. So that's one way to help. We also have the donation, the neighbor-to-neighbor donation program. And there are several hundred dollars a month that are sent to different organizations, such as Cornerstone, Boys and Girls Club, St. Vincent de Paul, the Food Bank, that can be used towards utilities when individuals and families are struggling to pay their utility bills, specifically water bills, so not any of the other bills. So certainly, they can reach out to those programs as well. That's what it's meant for.
Okay. And so my last question, when you did the rate study comparisons in the different communities, our neighboring communities, of those communities, I think if I recall, last time you were here, there were a few communities that were going through a rate study or a rate increase or and/or both at the time. Is that still the case, or are they pretty settled right now?
So the rates, as we have them right now, are what the rates are today. Lake Havasu City has adopted the policy where they won't raise their rates until after the summer period, so they're missing the peak period. So it's scheduled to come in October, so their rates most likely will go up in October. Bullhead City, I believe, was the other one that I mentioned last time around. So the last time I was here, they were headed to Washington to see if there were some grant, excuse me, grant monies available to help them out, and they've since come back and said, "We're going to revisit this in December." So they're still on track to do something, but just not right now.
Okay, so they're in a holding pattern, basically, but the likelihood of a rate increase is likely imminent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I know, and I'm not sure which question, but both of you can answer this, I'm sure. I think the last workshop, when we talked about this, when this was presented to us, we actually chose a program that would soften the blow from the initial request, correct? We sort of picked the middle-of-the-road one, council. Does that sound right?
We did. We had three different options. There was one without any loan from the wastewater fund, and then there was a third option that had a higher loan from the wastewater fund. And council chose the middle of the road, as you say.
To soften this impact of all this. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we brought that forward. Counselor, Sayley.
Tina, I see a lot of people here tonight that are interested in this item, and I wonder if you could just give everybody a little bit more information about how an enterprise fund works, because I think that's a term we throw around, but it isn't really clear about the fact that this is an enterprise fund and why we're in this position where we've got to raise rates, where we have to.
Absolutely. That's a great question. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Sayley. So with an enterprise fund, it is self-sustaining, meaning that our water users pay entirely for the system. It is not paid for with sales tax dollars or state-shared revenues, no general fund monies. So our water users unfortunately have to bear all of the expense of the rising costs necessary to maintain and operate that system. So as time goes on, and we enter inflationary periods, such as what we are in, and also conservation, right? Our customers are very aware of conservation. All of that impacts the revenues that we collect and the expenses that are flowed out of the system. And so that's why we have to have rate increases to continue to sustain and operate the system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Eric?
That was a great question. That was one of my questions. Also, I was wondering if it was possible, like why July 5th? Is it possible to postpone the rate increase till after the summer, so we can get through our hottest months and then kick it into gear?
So it's possible, but that would mean the rate would need to be even higher.
Great questions. Anybody else? Questions for Tina, for Kevin? Okay, thank you. Well, as has been stated, this is also a public hearing, so we would like to open this public hearing on this and have comments from those that have signed up for comments. Mr. Clark Rosas?
Good evening. I live in the Rancho Santa Fe area. I've spoken with all of my neighbors on my cul-de-sac, and they're all against this extremely high-water rate increase. I think there's probably a lot of places within the city that cutbacks could be made. And for instance, there's the municipal golf, the world-famous municipal golf course that gets a very favorable rate. That's one instance. And I'm against this rate increase. And I think this council should consider other sources of cutting back on expenses in other places rather than raising this rate like that. And this is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosas. Ms. Gail Glacier, or Glacier?
Hello, I'm a retired citizen of Kingman now, and I'm involved in a lot of local groups. And I've noticed that whenever there's even a small financial change in what a volunteer or participant does to a group, we have a lot of people drop out. The Mojave County Fair just stopped awarding $3 for a person who wins a ribbon, and all the entries went away. And I'm involved in the Dig It Community Garden, and the public can rent a plot there. And I won't say what the price is, but then we increase the rates, and those people, you know, if you're an average citizen with an average income and retirements, things just become overwhelming. You know, your grocery bill's so high that these extra things, you just have to drop out of them. And the community garden does provide a tremendous amount, hundreds of pounds of extra produce for the food services in the community, and it would be a shame to see that go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glacier. Mr. Ron Tanner?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and fellow citizens. I was here last year when we went through the same routine. And I'm speaking as a citizen. I've been in Kingman since 2004, and you guys are doing the same thing, again, raising rates. And I looked at this chart that he presented, and so it looks like it's going to go over years. Now, here's the problem. This is why I'm opposed to this. We talked about mitigation and rate reductions and stuff like that. I am involved in the community garden also. We had to raise our rates last time, and it really hurt a lot of people. Now, that garden does a lot for this community. It does a lot of activities for kids. We had a fire and police appreciation recognition day a couple of years ago. We do a lot of stuff. So this rate increase is going to kill us. I did some stuff back in LA City. They have a community garden council. 2016, they raised the rates due to a proposition 218. I hope y'all listen to this. Now, the rate, for example, in a community garden in Watts, the rate was $20 per bid. It went up to $80 by 2019. That virtually killed the community garden. What are y'all trying to do? Put us out of business? Put the garden out of business? That's what this is going to do. So we met with the manager's office last year, and we tried to look at projections about how much it was going to cost. We talked about 40%. Guess what? It increased to like 100%. It literally doubled. There's a lot of stuff that the gardeners do to save water, timers, drip irrigation, all the stuff that we should do. I met you, Mr. Mayor, when you were at the garden. So one of the things I ask, as I said, I'm opposed to this, because most citizens that I've talked to are opposed to it, but what can be done seriously and in earnest to try to give organizations that really help this community a really cut, some kind of break? That's what needs to happen, honestly. Because when you increase the rates, you're going to lose membership participation. That garden does a lot. We give to the homeless mission, we give to food banks, we give to a lot of stuff. So again, I'm dead opposed to this increase. And I looked at it, and it looks like it's going to increase over the years. We have the irrigation rate that goes from like 4.06 per thousand gallons, and it's going up, I think, to 5.16. That's a lot. That's like a 25% increase. That's going to hurt the hell out of the garden and the gardeners. So I hope y'all listen and really consider what I'm saying. I did the same thing last time, but anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. We appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the audience that hasn't signed up but that would like to speak on this subject? Okay. Hearing done, then. I'd like to close this public hearing. Counsel, discussion, comments?
Yeah, I can start off.
Okay, Counselor Eric?
I would like to really recognize the garden's contribution to the community. I've also heard that they do give a lot of produce, and if we give to certain nonprofits like Cornerstone and whatnot, I would like to consider that we also give them a stipend of some sort, potentially, or at least subsidize them in some way or form. I mean, they are a key part of this community, and a lot of people look up to them. So I just want to kind of put that out there, start it off with a positive note.
That's a good point. That's a good point. Thank you, Counselor Eric. Anything else, Counselor Sayley?
So in that regard, I would ask the city manager if that is a possibility to take some of those vouchers and give a portion, like a credit, to the community garden. So because it is along those same lines, Salvation Army, Cornerstone Mission, if they're creating food that's helping to feed our community, it seems like it would fall within those guidelines.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Sayley, we'll definitely look into that. I know currently, the program, as Director Moline had indicated, we receive those funds. The city doesn't distribute those funds directly to people in need. We distribute it to the charities who then contribute those vouchers to others. I would, so we'll look into it and see what the possibilities are there, if it's legally possible for us to be able to do that and make that happen. But we'll get back to you on that and let you know.
Counselor Sayley, you do bring up a valid point, especially because they are also donating to the other charities. So anyway, appreciate you.
We'll see if there's a way to make it work.
If you would check into that, yes, because of that. I know, and Counselor Sayley, I appreciate you bringing it up as far as enterprise fund and asking Tina about to clarify that. And another reminder is, our city does not have revenue sources like our sister cities do. That comes into play as far as moving monies around to be able to offset the cost on this. And of course, there's all these other things that our citizens want, and we're trying to manage those monies to accomplish those things. So it's a tough decision we're talking about. Fellow counselors, what else? Anything else you'd like to discuss?
I wanted to ask Tina a couple of questions.
Okay.
So the need to raise rates, I mean, I think we understand to sustain the system and be able to reinvest in the system and do the projects that we need to do to keep the system up and going. There was a call to the public where there was lots of talk about water main breaks and things of that nature. And so that is going to continue to be an issue, because we do have a very, very old system. So my question is, are we being as conservative as we possibly can with this rate increase? And I know you talked about the 45 days versus the 60 days. Is there somewhere in between the 45 and the 60 that would give us a feel-good for operations? I just, I don't want to take that jump. I don't feel like we're doing our citizens any favors by being able to, by taking that jump, but yet, we need to be fiscally responsible with our system and make sure that it has what it needs. So that's my question.
Okay. I'll start with the beginning. Vice Mayor, thank you so much for your question. I'd like to start with the beginning of your question, where you mentioned the water main breaks and the line breaks. I can share with you, and Rob's probably wanting to run- I can share with you, and Rob's probably wanting to run up here quickly and speak to it, but we are really at the bare bones in our capital renewal fund as far as the monies that we are allocating to our distribution line replacement program and our service line replacement program. We would love to be able to invest millions and millions of dollars to get everything fixed immediately, but we don't have the monies to do that, and we certainly don't want to recommend to the council to increase the rates to do that. So from the conservative perspective, in as far as capital replacement is concerned, I think we're being overly conservative from that respect. On the operating side, while we can certainly stay at 45 days, I would not recommend that we stay at 45 days. I think it's the very lowest that we would go, and while we could do something between 45 and 60, it still is a very low level to try to sustain the system's fiscal responsibility. So 60 would be where I would recommend the council maintain it, certainly. I would not recommend the 90 days. That would put us, you know, the rate increases would be very high. So I would recommend getting us to 60 days sooner rather than later. And then also, as far as the operating fund and the large increases that we're seeing, more than 50% of our costs are personnel. We know personnel is the biggest expense, right, of all of our operations? And electricity? Between those two, it's more than 50% of the operating fund. Those are things we don't have control over. So I do feel that we are conservative with the numbers that we are bringing to you. There were years that we were unable to provide vehicle replacements. We've talked about our fleet being in disarray, and finally, we're able to start providing our water system and our staff with the equipment that they need as well. So I know that this is a large jump for our citizens. There were many years where we had no increases at all, and whether that was the right, you know, the right approach or not, I don't know to get to where we are today, but this is where we are today. So I hope that answers your question, Vice Mayor.
It does. I mean, it helps to educate as to why, and so I appreciate your answers very much. In looking at our graphs here, fiscal year '29 is the end of, you know, this particular rate increase period. Will we reassess in '30?
We will reassess in '29. We'll bring something to you for fiscal year '30, yes.
Okay. So with this rate increase, it takes us all the way to '30.
It takes us all the way, yep, to '30. And again, just important to point out, it's based on where we are today. Anything can change over the next few years, right, just like we saw last year. But based on where we're seeing things today and to our very best projections and estimates, this is what we believe will happen over the next five years.
And you have taken into consideration population growth?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted that to be reiterated. Okay. This hurts. It's a pain point for a lot of our citizens, and I recognize that, but it's a pain point if we don't have the infrastructure and we can't sustain. I don't like to see those water breaks and leaks, and we seem to see them often. So anything we can do to mitigate that, I appreciate that. Thanks. Thank you.
Tina, you bring up an important fact, too, is our city is so much older than our sister cities. And because of that, our system is aging. And you just said, we could spend millions repairing it all and putting on a brand-new system in. We're going to continue to have leaks, and of course, especially during the summertime, those leaks seem to become more apparent. So, but I appreciate staff doing the best they can to control all that, doing the best they, anyway.
Thank you, Mayor.
Keeping the cost down. Thank you. Yes, Counsel Staley?
Can I just clarify? I want to make sure that we understand this. If you're the lowest rate user, which I think probably the majority of people, residential households, fall into that category of low, what we're going to see in our water bill would be going from $2,181 to $2,731. Is that right?
For the water bill?
For the water bill. So it's a $5.50 increase every month until 2030?
No.
It goes up a little bit every year? So $5.50 this year from July to July? Okay. I know, I mean, I agree. I agree with all of you. I don't want my water bill or the water bill at my business to go up either. With everything going up, it really starts to hurt. This is the tough part of sitting up here and being on the city council is, we've done the study. We know this fund needs more money in order to provide water. We all want water to come out of the tap, but we don't see any other way, I don't think, to lower this. In the last meeting that we talked, we went with a million-dollar loan from another fund in order to get these monthly rates down even lower, and I just feel we're in between a rock and a hard place. We have to increase the rate so that we can continue to deliver the service, and we will look at options for groups like the Dig It Garden. I think that's the best that we can do today, so I'm disappointed, too.
Tina, also, remind us from that workshop that we did, actually, last year, of course, or last year and a half, two years, we raised the rates. We started this whole discussion on having to raise rates. Prior to that, the last rate increase, actually, it was a decrease, wasn't it, back in 12, 2012 or something?
It was in 2012, I believe. Yeah, 12 or 13.
We actually had a decrease, and we hadn't done anything to support our water system as far as increases until that first increase in the last 18 months or so.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Counsel Walker.
Director Moline, where are we at on our reserves now? How many days were we at?
We are right at about 45 days.
We are at the 45. And by us borrowing this money from the wastewater fund?
Correct.
We're not hurting that fund at all?
We are not. We are able to sustain and keep our five-year plan in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Walker.
That's a good question.
Yes, Counsel Eric.
Quick question. Are we the only city? I think Prescott Valley also uses well water, correct? On the left-hand side in Prescott?
Councilman Eric, I don't know the answer to that.
Just kind of pointing that out. And then a member of the public also mentioned cutting other services because they don't need trash twice a year. I was talking to Mr. Tapia in Solid Waste about that, and to my understanding, it's a state requirement that you need to have trash pickup twice a week.
Councilman Eric, thank you for the question. It currently is. I know that there are some discussions going on at the state level about that, but currently it is.
Okay. And then I know that a recent incident happened where a company bored through a water pipe, causing a main break and a downage in an area of Kingman. That company gets invoiced for that break, correct? And repair? Or is that on the city?
Councilman Eric, that is typically on the city unless it's a large amount. And based, I'm aware of the leak, and I don't know how large of an expense that it will be, it would be yet. So if it's a large enough amount, we will bill the company and collect those monies, absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this water fund is separate from Solid Waste and Sewer?
That's correct. Each of those are also their own enterprise funds.
But they're all wrapped into the same bill?
They're all wrapped into the same.
So this is just affecting the water portion of our City of Kingman utility bill?
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, then we need a motion adopting the adoption of ordinance number 1955, increasing water base rates, volume rates, and capital renewal fees.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And once again, audience, thank you for being here tonight. I know it's an important issue. It's painful for all of us, as has been stated. But our city to continue to move forward, this is something we have to do. Item 4B, approve the payment to Arizona Department of Transportation and applicable budget transfer for the Rancho Santa Fe Interchange Project. Actually, before we start that, if there are any of you who'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to, we'll take a second so you can leave. But thanks again for being here. I know. Once again, we thank everybody for being here. Item 4B, approve the payment to ADOT and applicable budget transfer for the Rancho Santa Fe Interchange Project. Our city manager, Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm happy to announce that we have received the invoice for the Rancho Santa Fe Interchange. It came in, it's in your packet there, and I just lost it. It came in at $48,282,772.86. That does include the ICAP fees at the 8.8% rate rather than the 10.7% that was initially proposed. I have confirmed with ADOT, it is scheduled for their June 21st meeting for approval, and they have indicated that they are looking at an early July to get that out, get that advertised for bid. So exciting times. But this right here is for your consideration to approve the payment to ADOT. With your approval, we will issue that check this week and get that project rolling.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I appreciate that. As Counsel Staley mentioned before the meeting, this is historic times on something like this, on approving this and moving forward with this new interchange. Any comments or questions for Mr. Walsh?
I did.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Just confirming, so according to the development agreement, we will write the check to ADOT, and we will invoice the developer for their portion, according to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
And of course, even though we are, actually, Mr. Walsh, can you explain sort of the mechanics a little bit? Because I know you shared with a little bit, some of us, even though this is being approved, and we've talked about, of course, we're going to invoice the developers, but also it needs to go before the State Transportation Board. Can you discuss a little bit more about that?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, so counsel, if counsel approves this, we will issue the check to ADOT to cover the cost for the construction of the project. ADOT, this is not currently one of ADOT's program projects, so on June 21st, it is on their agenda to add that to their program projects at that point. Once it's added to their projects, they will then pull the plans and specifications, put all that together, package it up, and advertise for bid. And what they indicated to me is that they're looking at early July to get that out.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, any other comments or questions for Mr. Walsh? You have a comment?
A general comment, not for the city manager.
Counsel Staley?
Yeah, I just can't go without making a comment about how exciting this is. Finally, after all these years, a project that was proposed in 1970 originally and has had many stops and starts, and we are finally here, and we have pieces put together, and we'll hand it off to ADOT with the check, and then it'll be their responsibility to see it the rest of the way. But this is a big day for Kingman and for our future, for economic development, and so I am really excited for this community and what this project will bring.
Thank you, Counsel Staley for that, Walker. I mean, for that comment. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to make a motion.
You'd like to make a motion?
I would.
Are we at that point? Anybody else? We're good?
So excited.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the payment to Arizona Department of Transportation and applicable budget transfer for the Rancho Santa Fe Interchange Project.
And Counsel Walker?
I'll second that.
Great. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Counsel Staley suggested, because this is historic times, did she like to have a photo up right now, if that's all right?
That's great. We needed a road sign that says Rancho.
Yeah. And city manager, aye?
Aye. I'd almost invite anyone in the public to watch.
I know.
Is there anybody else here who'd like to join us? This is historic. Ashing, Becky Foster, Chamber of Commerce. This is important.
You got it. It's historic.
I'll urge you here.
Mike?
Mike, come on. I'm going to split. How's that?
Oh, absolutely. I was hoping he'd be in the middle of us.
Once again, come on, don't be afraid. This is history. Tina, this is history. Now, Rob?
Thank you.
Bennett?
Our fire chief, police chief, we invite you, too, if you'd like. I mean, Joel, our assistant chief.
Hey, this doesn't happen but once every 50, 20 years.
Or more. Or more.
Just have on this side, just petty on this side. Let's go to this side. Come on, Joel, get over here. Don't be afraid. Squeeze in, people. All right. Ready? One, two.
Thank you.
Item number... Wait, did anybody bring champagne? I was going to ask. Or something non-alcoholic?
For the next one.
There you go. Okay. Item 4C, Rancho Santa Fe Development Agreement update from KDP Manager LLC. And once again, Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Mayor, this item is coming back from the March 11th special council meeting that we held, that both sides of the KDP managers' group was here and provided updates. At that time, they were requested to come back, the first meeting in June, to give us an update on the arbitration. I reached out and invited both parties to come and provide an update. I received responses back from both parties indicating that they are in arbitration this week and would be unable to make it. So my recommendation is that we continue this item to the June 18th meeting, and I'll invite both of them to come back at that point.
Okay, so we really don't need to do anything on this, or a motion or anything?
Motion to table.
Yeah, motion to continue to the 18th.
Continue to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So move, then. Thank you, Tim.
We need to vote.
Oh, do we need to go ahead and make a motion on it?
I'll second it.
Okay. There is, sounds like we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5A, new business, consideration of Resolution Number 5507, call of general election. Resolution Number 5507 will designate the date of November 5th, 2024, as the date for the general election for the purpose of referring the general plan to 24 to the voters for ratification and any potential council candidate runoff elections. Per ARS 16-226, the election must be called no later than 150 days prior to the date of the election. Staff recommends approval. Turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is pretty straightforward. It's part of our general election process, so I will answer any questions the council may have. As soon as this is done, then we will go into posting for our call for arguments for or against, and creation of our publicity pamphlet, and all the things that come along with our general election.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Any questions for Ms. Meredith? Okay. Can we have a motion, then? Approving Item 5A, consideration of Resolution Number 5507, call of general election.
So move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. 5B, consideration of Resolution Number 5511, adoption of fiscal year 2024-25 tentative budget. The fiscal year 2024-25 tentative budget reflects the attached revisions from what was presented at the May Budget Work Session. The tentative budget sets a ceiling on the appropriations at $339,300,000. Okay, can we have a motion then, approving item five A, consideration of resolution number five-five-zero-seven, call of general election? So move. Do we have a second?
A second.
All those, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Five B, consideration of resolution number five-five-one-one, adoption of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five tentative budget. The fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five tentative budget reflects the attached revisions from what was presented at the May Budget Work Session. The tentative budget sets a ceiling on the appropriations at three-hundred-and-thirty-nine million, three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. The final budget scheduled for adoption on July second, two thousand twenty-four can meet but not exceed the amount adopted with this resolution. The tentative budget is within the state expenditure limitation as modified by the permanent base adjustment. Staff recommends approval. Turn some time over to Tina.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. So, we are nearing the end of the budget adoption process with tonight's fiscal year twenty-five tentative budget and five-year capital improvement plan adoption. While it's a lengthy process, it starts to wrap up in May when the city manager shares his recommended budget with you during the budget work session in the middle of May. And that did happen this year, and that gives the council an opportunity to dive in and make any modifications that they see fit during that time. And this year, there were some modifications to the recommended, the recommended budget. And so, before we move forward with anything, I want to make sure that city staff captured everything that the council wanted modified, and, and then we can, then we can talk about any other further modifications that you might see fit before we get to the final budget adoption in early July. Let me find that. Yeah, the one that I'm on right now? Okay, thank you. Yep. All right, so during the recommended budget, we talked about adding something for a citywide app. And so, we added fifteen thousand dollars to the city manager's budget for a citywide app. So that has been addressed in the tentative budget. We also talked about adding neighborhood cleanups, four specifically. And staff estimated that each of those would cost about five thousand dollars, that's a conservative number. And we added that to the solid waste fund, which is where the city, the Clean City Commission budget is housed, since they will be leading that initiative, or certainly participating in it. And then we also talked about the Fire Station twenty-five. We talked about the design of it, and possibly looking at moving maybe fire admin over there, maybe looking at dispatch, but looking at some different options than what the original design was. So we knew that we needed to add more monies to update the design than what we originally appropriated. So we added an additional eighty thousand dollars to accommodate that. So, those are the three that council specifically added for fiscal year twenty-five. And then, if you recall, at the last council meeting, there was going to be an authorization for the council to approve financing for the Santa Rosa Transmission Main Project. We pulled it at the last minute because we heard at the last minute that our cost estimates were very low. So, we decided that we needed to add another three-point-four million for the project and additional debt issuance costs to possibly pay for that project. Now, we're negotiating with the contractor right now, so I don't know what the number will end up being, but we want to make sure that we appropriate enough in the event that we need to bring to you a larger figure. So we're asking to increase the appropriations in the Water Capital Renewal Fund by three-point-five million dollars. So it's a total increase from the recommended budget in appropriations to the tentative budget's appropriations of three-point-six-one-five million, making total appropriations at three-hundred-and-thirty-nine million, three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. I do want to point out that whatever is adopted this evening for the tentative budget sets that maximum ceiling for appropriation. So it's important that whatever is discussed this evening for any further modifications be discussed and included in the tentative budget, because at the final budget, we cannot increase any of the appropriations. Also, before we move forward, one of the other requests that were made at the recommended budget was to also include two monument signs for, or the monument sign budget anyhow. If you recall, city staff removed that item, reallocated those monies to traffic interchange landscaping. Council said, no, we, we want those signs still. So we did appropriate for those in fiscal year twenty-six, is what we had talked about at the meeting. So those are in the five-year plan, and I will make sure to show you so that you see that. They are in the five-year plan right here, the monument signs. So they are allocated, they're just not in the appropriations for fiscal year twenty-five. So if, if staff captured that correctly, I would certainly ask the council at this point to provide any further modifications that need to be made to the tentative budget.
Any comments or questions for Tina? Yes, Councilor Staley.
I hate to do this, but we were in a meeting on Friday to discuss our future plans for trails, and it was the city manager, Mike Miersman, Tourism Josh Noble was there, Ingle Holmes was there to talk about contributing to trails going forward. And so, what I realized in that meeting is that we did not allocate for the master plan, the trail master plan that Mike Miersman had discussed previously in meetings. And I don't, I don't know why, I assumed it was in there, but I was wrong. And so I wanted to ask the council tonight if we could include funding to get the master plan created in this upcoming budget. And the reason why it's important, there's several reasons, but one is we've, we've basically completed the White Cliffs Trails. And now what we would be looking at is a twelve-mile paved loop that would go from Walpai Mountain Road all the way under I-40 to Kingman Crossing, up to the Rancho, or excuse me, the Rattlesnake Wash, back under I-40 behind Rancho, and then back around. So, it's that paved section that we had talked about last year and approved, and they're gonna get started on that very soon, and Ingle Holmes is paying a hundred thousand dollars. They're making a donation to the city to pay for that. They are willing to look at potentially making that donation every single year for several years going forward. And the next stretch next to that, the one that we're gonna build this year, is on state land. And what has been explained to me is that to put a trail across state land, you have to have a master plan that's certified, so that they will let you do that. So, if we want to keep adding on to this trail that we've got a donor for, we, we need to have this plan completed. I also provided the council with a picture of another proposed trail that is at the northern and Stockton Hill area, and that would go over two pieces of state land if we got permission, and it would connect into the Surbat Trail System. So there are several very exciting trail projects that we could start working on and applying for grants and getting these donations, but it sounds like we need to make an investment in this master plan first. And so, I will turn that over to the city manager to kind of explain the rest of it.
City Mayor, thank you, members of council. I think Councilwoman Staley explained it very well. There are a number of trails that are being considered, as she mentioned, the, the trail over from Walpai Mountain Road, the, the big loop there, the White Cliffs Trails, the, we've got a number of trails throughout Kingman. And what this master plan would do, would really tie all of those together, put some, some planning and foresight into connecting those trails, bringing them all together, and really, not only from a trail standpoint, putting a, some, some thought and, and planning into it, but, but really from a marketing standpoint and a tourism standpoint too, really pull that all together so that, so that it can be marketed to people outside of town and bring, bring those folks to town and hopefully to our restaurants and hotels. Working with Mike Miersman, he, he looked at a number of different options for, for funding a, a trail master plan. And like Councilwoman Staley mentioned, many of these proposed trails do cross state land, and one of the key components of getting land through state, or getting permission to go through state land for trails is a master plan, approved master plan. But talking with Mike Miersman, it looks like for what we would need, you know, they'll, they'll let you spend as much money as you want, but, but something that, that would bring all this together and provide what we need, we're looking probably around the hundred thousand range. So a hundred thousand dollars to a consultant, a, that would, a trail expert that would be able to pull all of that together from a planning standpoint would be, would be what we would need at this point.
And, Manager Walsh, if I can just add, add in. So, Councilwoman Staley, we're not remiss, we did talk about that at the planning and priority setting retreat, and we did talk about putting monies aside not until fiscal year twenty-six, but we were planning on allocating those monies, so they are certainly available, those resources are available.
So, actually, I'll, okay. So, mechanics-wise, right now, if we wanted to include that into this budget, is that doable? Or is that, what do we do, or is it?
One hundred percent, we would just need direction from the council.
And we can still vote on this tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, Councilor Savage. The money that we set aside for the evening museum, is that money available to utilize that hundred thousand dollars for?
It is not, it is, it was reallocated towards...
Right, thank you.
So I had a question, can any of the tourism's bed tax monies go to contribute to this study?
Vice Mayor, I think that is an excellent suggestion, so absolutely it can.
Yes, I would, I would be in favor of that, definitely. Since you spoke so highly of bringing, attracting tourists and, and things like that. So, I'd like to see those funds contributed to this, so it would make less of it, and then move the master plan up from twenty-six.
Absolutely.
That would be my suggestion. Do we know how much is, is it sixty thousand that's in tourism? The bed tax? No?
As far as the dollar amount that we collect in bed tax for?
No, 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 that would be available to contribute to this. It's future monies, right?
It is, it's monies that we've already collected, so we could certainly use those monies for it. We collect, goodness, almost nine-hundred thousand dollars a year for, in the bed tax monies.
So this could fund that, and it wouldn't impact the budget?
And we would not, we would not impact the capital projects fund budget, but we would impact the tourism budget.
Yes, sorry, I misspoke. That would be my suggestion to the council.
I think we're all in, I think we're all in favor of this.
Yeah, that's a motion.
The mechanics, and we leave that up to you, Tina, to work your magic and make it all happen.
I can do that.
I just, I'm not in favor of increasing, I'm in favor of reallocating.
I see.
Just want to confirm with City Attorney Cooper that we can use those monies towards the trails.
Seems wholly appropriate.
Thank you.
Great, okay. Any other questions for Tina? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a motion then, approving resolution number five-five-eleven, adoption of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five tentative budget?
So moved.
With the discussion?
Allocation. Allocation of bed tax dollars.
Oh, there you go.
To pay for the master plan for trails and moving it up from twenty, from twenty-six to twenty-five.
Okay, I think we got it all, you got it all.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion, and we have the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item five C, ordinance number nineteen-fifty-eight, recommended revision to section two-dash-two D of street regulations. Section two-dash-two, paragraph D of the city's street regulations requires street improvements for multifamily and commercial remodels with a cost valuation greater than twenty thousand dollars. It is recommended to increase the threshold for street improvements to greater than fifty thousand dollars to reflect increases in construction costs since nineteen ninety-eight. Staff recommends approval. And we'll turn it over to Mike Garment.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It was kind of interesting trying to go through our street reg revisions over the last twenty-five years to try to figure out how this came to fruition. I haven't obviously been around long enough. I think, based on some conversations I've had, that originally, the regs said that all building permits required, all commercial building permits required street improvements, and this one was introduced to make an exception for commercial remodels. And if it was anything less than twenty thousand dollars, they didn't have to do street improvements. As we all know, prices have gone up over the last twenty-five years. You almost can't even get an architect hired for twenty thousand dollars anymore. So, we thought it would be better to raise the threshold to reflect that. We had Finance Director Tina Maline look into what an appropriate amount would be based on the engineering news record cost indices. And it ended up being around forty-five to forty-six thousand dollars. We thought we would just go ahead and round it up to fifty thousand dollars because we know the prices are gonna go up probably in the future, and we don't want to have to come back and do this again every year. So with that, I'll take anybody's questions.
Questions for Mr. Garment? I almost, something like this, I'd almost like to see on an automatic scale going up every year if there's a, you know, because of, we all have costs going up every year, but I know we can't probably do that, right, Carl?
Well, I mean, you can tie in some kind of scale if you want, but I think sometimes the periodic evaluation might be the best option, just to make sure you're staying in tune and maybe not blowing past certain numbers. It may be more expedient to do.
And Mike, as you said, twenty thousand dollars, that was back from nineteen ninety-eight dollars. Now that's the equivalent of like forty-five, forty-six thousand dollars.
Right, exactly.
So, okay. Yes, Councilor Eric?
I had a quick question in regards to that estimate of fifty thousand. Let's say Contractor Smiley gave me an estimate for fifty-five thousand, and Contractor Jamie gave me an estimate for thirty thousand. If I choose Contractor Jamie, do I have to make any improvements?
We go based on whatever is submitted by the applicant. They, they work with a contractor and with an engineer, and they come up with the price for the remodel, and they submit it to us as part of their, their application.
So it's not based on appraisal or anything like that? It's kind of, if you find it cheap enough, you don't have to do anything?
That, that's right.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Can we have a motion then, approving ordinance number nineteen-fifty-eight, recommended revision to section two-dash-two D of street regulations?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mike. Five D, acceptance of bleacher shade cover donation from Kingman Little League. At the May thirteenth meeting of the PARG Commission, the commission voted unanimously, unanimously in favor of recommending to council that they accept the donation of seven bleacher shade covers at South Side Park from Kingman Little League. The total amount of the, of the donation is fifteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Staff recommends approval.
They're getting it for me. Aaron's handling it? Give my hands off? Good evening, Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor, thank you very much.
Welcome, Mr. Miersman.
Okay, they got him, perfect. So this is about a donation from the Kingman Little League, and it's for bleacher covers over all the rest of the bleachers that we have at South Side Park. We're really excited about this project. It's not only good for shade, obviously, it's good for foul balls hitting people in the head. So I really think they're, most importantly, maybe, I don't know, but like I said, it's a very, very good project, and it's, Kingman Little League's willing to donate fifteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents for the materials to do this, and our park staff is gonna assemble them. So, here's the letter from the Kingman Little League, and obviously a huge thank you to Dane Asplin, Will Van Usting, and all the Kingman Little League board, and all the parents of Little League. I mean, I just appreciate what they do for all the youth in our community all the time anyways, but, and then their willingness to do this. To me, it's just a great thing. So, that's basically all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I see some Little League parents here, and I'm not sure who they are, the board members possibly, but if they would like to say something, I would welcome that. So, yeah, thank you to the board members, obviously, they're the ones who make it happen, so.
This is a great donation, especially to our community, so thanks again. Mike, do you have a, do you have the picture again? Can you go back to it? I think that's important to see. There you go. I mean, like you said, protecting people from foul balls, that's important.
We have these at Centennial too, and it's just, they're, this is gonna be a great addition. And we have a state tournament coming up, we'd like to get them done for that, so we're really excited about this project, so, you know, I think it's a great thing, so.
Great. Any questions or comments for Mr. Miersman? Okay.
Thank you.
Hearing none, can we have then a motion for five D, acceptance of bleacher shade cover donation from Kingman Little League?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Five E, muck referral sewer connection for... Oh, thank you, Vice Mayor, that's a great idea. Oh, that's Annie, okay. Mike, it was, has been suggested that we have a picture with all those participating, especially Kingman Little League and with you and of course, Council, who'd like to participate.
It's because you're popular, Smiley.
This is amazing. Do we want to hold a check? We can do that.
Get in the window.
You gotta crouch.
Find a window.
I go in the back.
Big cardboard checks on. Oh, well.
Very. Perfect, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I don't have another smile on.
Annie, Vice Mayor, thank you for.
She caught my attention.
Well, that's. Okay, item 5E, and of course, muck referral. It's Municipal Utilities Commission referral sewer connection for APN. That's actually actual parcel number, isn't it? Uh-huh. 324-14-522B. Kevin Musro applied for an exception to connect to sewer for parcel 324-14-522B. Connection to sewer would require 482 feet of sewer line to be constructed. The applicant plans to build a duplex on this parcel. The request was heard by the Municipal Utilities Commission on May 9th, 2024. The Municipal Utilities Commission recommended granting the exception. And that vote was four to zero. Mr. Garment, good to see you again.
Why should be the other one? I think that's the one. Yeah, that's the one. You're right. Sorry about that. It's hard to see. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, this item was heard by the Municipal Utility Commission back on May 9th. They recommended granting the exception. I think the main thrust of the comments from the commission had to do with the fact that this is a corner lot and in a way, the guy's kind of being, I guess, punished or whatever because he's got a corner lot. And so he ends up having to install more sewer than he normally would. There was also a lot of questions about paybacks. Just to clarify, paybacks would be with lots that have frontage for the sewer line. So it would be, there would be a total of one, two, three, four, five, six possible paybacks. But that's only if those lots actually develop. The payback agreement lasts for 20 years. So any time between now and 20 years from now, if somebody developed one of those lots, they would, they would owe a payback for the, the construction of the sewer. I'll take any questions.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Eric.
So this is my commission that I'm liaison for. I just wanted to kind of set the tone for this. I, I'm not happy personally with this system. We, we tend to find ourselves in situations, especially with corner lots, where people are right on the precipice or on the cusp of having, you know, 500 feet. And, you know, as we approve them, you know, it's very hard to say, okay, you have to pay up to, you know, I think, what do you say? $50,000 was the estimate you received for $50,000 plus for, for the work to be done.
Are you the applicant?
Yes.
What was your estimate? Did you get an estimate?
70,000.
70,000.
And it's very hard for us to be like, okay, well, you know, you really want to approve the variance. And this is our fourth. These will be three and four, I think, during my time here. And I just want to kind of state, like, if we keep giving variances to these, which I'm not against per se, I think this, I think the system needs to be reevaluated and we need to discuss another possible solution where we're not just granting variances every time.
Valid point, Councilor Eric. Any other comments or questions? These are always tough, as Councilor Eric just brought up. On the one hand, we want to see our sewer system continue, but it puts a heavy load on somebody trying to develop a lot. And they're right, just right inside that limit. Because it, as you, it's always been discussed, 500 feet is the limit. After 500 feet, you're free and clear.
Right.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. And it might be, I'm sure Mike can help us here. Now, these other lots here are undeveloped, between him and the sewer, correct? And you said there were six of them?
Right.
Is there any way we could use some of our sewer funds to help put this in and tie paybacks to these other lots as a city? Is, is that?
Probably more of a Carl deal.
I don't, because there's always possibilities to do city assisted, you know, installation or sharing those kind of costs if those are something we talk about. But I don't know where this is programmed currently and, and what that, how that would work.
Because it's not like we're going through a neighborhood where they're all established already and we're just betting that their septic system fails. This is, you know, these first couple lots are close enough that they'll probably have to do it eventually. And these lots out here are starting to develop. So I don't know if that's something the city wants to look at in the future, that we use some of our funds to, you know, I don't know if it's legal. That's, you know, how do we set this up to try to, to better our sewer system to get more rate payers onto it? You know, that's one thought I have. And the other thought is, is if we give this variance, is there anything in the paperwork that says, once sewer gets to him, he will tie on? That's Mike's question.
Well.
If we were to give him a variance to let him not tie on to sewer now, and let's say somebody starts developing this and sewer gets to him, is he obligated to ever tie on to us?
Councilman Walker, that's a good question. So if we grant him a variance now, he's going to get a septic system? And then the way the utility regs are set up, he's not obligated to connect to the sewer until his septic system fails, which could be a long time from now.
Yeah, okay, right. Thank you.
Actually, Councilor Walker and, you know, Councilor Eric, this is something we, we do need to maybe reevaluate how we do this. Because, and actually, Mr. Musro, is that I'm saying it right? Actually, could you come forward too, so that you're on record with the mic? Thank you. Have you got a, have you received, and I'm sure you've gotten an estimate on what your septic cost is going to be?
Yes, that's going to be by John Ho Construction. He'll be doing it. What it'll cost, it'll be 15,000.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's why I was wondering, is that number there? So that's what we needed to know. So thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comment or questions for Mr. Musro? Councilor Eric?
No, mine's from Mike, sorry.
Okay, so I think, thank you. That's what I wanted to find out.
Right now, to be honest, doing the sewer, it would be more than what the two lots are worth. And I already got the okay for septic on the one lot. Now I want to put septic on this one and build two nice duplexes, so.
Makes sense. Thank you. So along the lines of, Keith, what you were just saying, we're looking at 15,000. And so if each of those six lots donated 15,000 or were assessed that in the, for the future, that would cover the cost of that sewer line extension.
Because this project here, there's undeveloped land.
Correct.
Where we're not going in an existing neighborhood where we're betting on their septic's are going to fail. These ones most likely would have to put sewer in eventually.
Right.
But, you know, I, I'm willing to give this variance tonight, but I think we do need to look at our, our criteria for this to see if we can use some of our, our money that we have in the sewer fund to fund this and to tie to these properties if we can legally do that.
And then when those properties.
Then they'll pay when they come and get their permits.
That's part of their thing. That would help extend our sewer system.
But I don't want to hold this project up either.
This is true.
So that's why, Mike, I'm willing to, if council is in favor of giving this variance, I'm, I'm for it.
Okay. Councilor Eric, you had a question for Mr. Garment?
Yeah, so we were, I was talking to Tim about this earlier today and we had kind of touched on a point. He mentioned it to me about where, I forgot the example exactly, but basically you require them up to the septic tank's worth. So if it's $15,000 to put a septic tank in and you require them, as long as it's within $15,000 worth of sewer line, does that make sense? So instead of that 500-foot variance, you have, you attach it to a septic tank's worth of footage?
You decrease the, you decrease the, the amount of feet.
Yeah.
To allow for the variance.
So instead of paying for a septic tank, $15,000 for a septic tank, if they were within $15,000 worth of distance connecting by sewer, they would pick the sewer, obviously.
Well, and I agree. I, I don't know, I, I had asked Manager Walsh to pull some statistics with variances that were granting under the 500 feet. So I, I mean, I wanted to make sure that, what, what is, what is a good number? Is that we could move it down too? Because then that would alleviate us having to hear all these variances and, and, you know, the property owner having to come in and go through the application process and the commission hearing and all those things if we, if we could reduce it. So I'm in favor of a long-term solution. But I'm, I mean, I, I am in favor.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I, I am in favor of, of granting the exception.
The variance?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am.
Mayor Watkins.
Yes, yes.
In, just, just, I, I really appreciate the discussion and looking at some of the, you know, water issues that we face with the aquifer and that, the more connections we can get to sewer, the more water we can recharge back into the ground, which then helps the health of our aquifer. I, I don't know the timing that the applicant has on this. If he'd be amenable to it, I'd be happy to, if, if, if it would be, if the council would be amenable to it and the applicant as well, I'd be happy to, if the council would be happy, we could, a lot of happy there. Spit it out. We're going to go, what I'm suggesting is if we could continue this till the next meeting, we could look at some of those numbers, look at possibility of extending the sewer, attaching those paybacks and keeping him moving forward. My understanding generally, being connected to sewer is, is a lot, a lot better proposition than being connected to, to a septic tank, both for the applicant and for, for the city. But just throw that out there as an option to consider. We could bring this back in, in, in the next meeting and I can have some of those statistics as far as how many between that 200-foot to 500-feet are, are being approved, what the cost would be to, to run that sewer up there for the city and then those paybacks as well, if, if council would like.
Okay. Mr. Musro, could you come back up, please? So you heard the, our proposition from our city manager. Can you, your, your project wait two weeks so we can work on this some more?
It would be two weeks, you say?
Basically, yes, I think that's what Manager Walsh.
We would have it back before council on the 18th.
And you're going to be looking at other people that have done the septic versus the sewer?
Yeah, so what we would do is we would look at the number of variances that we've had, look at that policy. But in, in your specific case, we would look at the cost for the city to run the sewer up there. And then basically, rather than you paying the full cost, the 70,000 or whatever the estimate was, it would just be your portion based on a payback.
I mean, we don't want to hold your project up, but if you're still. Two weeks, if you're two weeks is, is fine.
Yeah, well, I can wait the two weeks, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Musro. I appreciate that. Council, are you all right with that? Okay, so then can we have a motion then pushing this back to our second, our next meeting?
I will make that motion that we table this until the next, until the following meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Musro, for your patience with us too. Okay, item 5F, Municipal Utilities Commission referral sewer connection for parcel number 324-14-103. Eric Weston and Esther Kozawa requesting an exception for sewer connection for parcel 324-14-103. Connection to sewer would require 445 feet of sewer line to be constructed. The applicant plans to install a single wide mobile home on this parcel. The request was heard by the Municipal Utility Commission on May 9th, 2024. And the Municipal Utilities Commission recommended granting the exception. And that was with a four, zero vote. Of course, Councilor Eric, you're the liaison to a similar thing as before, I'm sure?
Similar, I also had a question just for clarity on this one. From my understanding, if anyone before the yellow box connects, they would pay into the payback. My question was with someone connects on Thompson and connects to the extension on Bank Street, does that, do they end up paying the payback as well? Is that kind of split up? Or is it just based off of the one, two, three, four, five, six?
Councilman Eric, that's a good question. It's basically frontage property. So whoever fronts the, the new sewer line is involved in the payback. So anybody upstream of that would not be.
So if someone goes on to the west side of Leroy, they don't pay anything back for that extent, that extension on Bank?
No.
Okay. Even though he's paying for that extension on Bank?
It would just be the frontage property.
So his payback would be based off of one undeveloped parcel?
Yeah, I think that's the point that the commission made on this one is that there are fewer opportunities for a payback because all the lots are already developed except for one lot. So you basically have to wait for those septic systems to fail.
So this is what I wanted to kind of point, Tim, out in the, maybe something that we could discuss is since the other homes on the other side of Leroy or the homes on Thompson are also going to be tying into this tap off of the Bank Street connection, maybe we can rope them in so that they help pay back the original extender? At least, you know, make a formula or a strategy of some sort?
But that's only in the event that if they, their septic's fail.
Yep.
Right.
At, at what point in time?
Who knows?
Yeah.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Interject for a second. One thing to consider, and I've kind of wondered, since I'm kind of late in the game here, just arriving a little less than a year ago, how we came about the 500-foot distance. I'll comment that the maximum spacing for manholes is 500 feet. And I'm wondering if perhaps the intention was if somebody can connect without paying for a manhole, then that's when they would, they would be required to connect. But as you can see, that doesn't always work out, especially if you have to make a corner. Like that corner there at Elroy and Bank, that manhole's worth about 70, 500 bucks. So that's just something to keep in mind.
As we've already discussed, we probably need to revisit this as a council and to make it easier for everybody to hook up. As, and as Manager Walsh, it is more important that we get as many as we can to hook onto our sewer system.[1741.54] Manager Walsh?
Sorry. Mayor, on, on this case, and a question for, for Mike as well, this case is a little bit different. Looking at the location of the lot, I have concern, just knowing the grades in that area. Leroy is graded, basically it, it slopes from west to east. So as you go further east, you get a lower gradient. In connecting to the sewer here, we would ultimately be, be going against grade on Leroy and then bringing it back down to Bank Street. My concern is future expansion in this area, you would want your sewer line on Leroy running from, from east to west and going with the grade. By, by forcing this connection, you're ultimately creating a high point and you would stop your sewer at this point. So, so it wouldn't fit in with the overall, a, a master design of this area. You'd want the, the sewer running from west to east rather than what it would be forced to do with an east to west, so. On this one, I, I would actually agree with, with the commission's recommendation for the, for the variance due to the fact that it would completely up in standard engineering practice in, in running the sewer that way.
Okay.
Well, and there's not that many lots to connect, as in the prior case, so I'm, I, I would support this variance as well.
And I'm, I'm getting a shaking head here from Mike, so I'll, I'll let Mike correct me if I, if I got that wrong.
Manager Walsh, I normally check the grades on these before we go to, to Muck, and I don't recommend any connections where we have to buck, buck grade to get to them. If I'm not mistaken, I think this one actually works out from a design standpoint, as far as the slopes and the grades go.
So, so my point is, you could get to this lot, you could get to this lot with a sewer line, but your sewer line on Leroy would be sloping from east, or from, yeah, east to west, where in the, in the ultimate scheme of things, you would want your sewer line sloping from west to east, correct? That, that, that was the point I was trying to make.
Okay.
So, so you're correct in, in that we could make the connection, but in the overall design of it, we would want to go from west to east.
Sure.
Okay. We appreciate your expertise, both of you. And Manager Walsh, thank you. Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Garman or Mr. Walsh, as far as that goes? Okay, so can we have, anyway, approval for item 5F, the Municipal Utilities, Municipal Utilities Commission referral sewer connection for APN 324-14-103?
I'll make that.
Vice Mayor, and then, and then, yes, Mr. Ward will second it. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that variance is granted. Thank you. You gotta arm wrestle for it. Okay, item number six, Department Reports, Legislative Update. Counsel, or Mr. Manager Walsh?
Legislative update, I believe we have Tom Dorn on the line. Tom, you, are you, can you hear us? There he is.
I can hear you. I've heard you all meeting. It's, uh, it's been a very happy meeting compared to the legislature today, so.
Thank you, Tom.
The legislature could take a lesson from what you've all, all done there in Kingman. Speaking of the legislature today, just, well, to give you an upper update, I know Annie was gonna put our couple slides up on, on the, on the, on the screen, and some of it is pretty much a, a repeat from the last month because a lot of things haven't changed. Their hat, they have been plugging through on bills, but let me just kind of give you some of the overview first, what we call the Capitol Buzz. Today was HCR 2060, and this was, it passed out of the Senate, 31 to 29, after two, over two hours of debate and discussion, or explanation of votes is probably the way to put it. The votes were there, and that was not going to change. You may have seen on the news that Speaker Toma, Representative Gillette joined him. He was part of the delegation that went down to the border in Yuma County on Sunday and Monday. They all spoke about their experience as they explained their votes. That's, was on the Republican side. On the Democrat side, you had some pretty passionate comments, one towards Speaker Pro Tem, Travis Grantham told Representative Annalise Ortiz that he was not going to call on her again. And he actually did later, but she was much more respectful. The speaker decided to not allow the public into the gallery. So, and he did that because of the, the screaming and protesting that was occurring in the gallery when the vote occurred over in the Senate last week. And so that he, but there, the, the Capitol was filled with people in the building watching it on closed circuit television, and there were some major demonstrations and protests in, in the lobby of the House and outside of the House today. So basically, you, you know the issue. It's, it's, some people call it a, you know, return of Senate Bill 1070 from many years ago. It's, it's not that. It does not have a lot of those provisions in it. It's very different. The main focus is on if you do not cross at a border port of entry, and there's video coverage of you doing so. Law enforcement has the privilege, as they would put it, to pursue you and, and regardless of where you are in the state, because they have video coverage of you doing that. Also, fentanyl penalties on that, also on some benefits and clarifying e-verify. A lot of it is restating what's already in federal law and put it as state law so the state can pursue these things. So it's going to be one of the major issues on the ballot. As you know, as you already know, we have a handful of issues already that are going to be on the November ballot, and, and a lot of this is done on both sides to drive their people to the ballot. And, and so this is something the Republican majority wanted to do. Governor Hobbs, obviously, she spoke against it strongly afterwards, but the legislature still has about 14 or so, or 13 concurrent resolutions that they could put on the November ballot. As your, as your county recorder in your elections folks know, it's, it's ridiculous. You know, I think people are going to go to the ballot no matter what, personal opinion, because of the presidential election. But each side really feels they need to push, whether it's through initiative or referral from the legislature to drive their people out with these measures. So we'll see what, where things go. The rest of the Capitol buzz, if you will, is about water, and I'll cover that and some of the water bills and the situation there, but also with the budget. The numbers have not changed from what we put up before. It's the same, that's the same slide from last time, as far as the 1.3 bill, 3, $2 billion shortfall. And then I still find it funny, the ongoing one-time revenue shortfall is still 369, still ongoing. And so that's what we're dealing with. You know, we may see some numbers come in soon, as we move, later we move into June, they're probably going to see more revenue hopefully come in because of the April tax filings. So that remains to be seen. And the stats on the, right there on the bottom, you can see the, the bills, the status of where we are. Legislators are still getting per diem. So moving on, Annie, if you can switch to the next slide. Any questions on all, any of that so far with regard to the budget or the ballot measures? Nope? Okay. With regard to the major issues, we just listed these again, many, we added a few, took a few off, but these are the major issues that we've been working on for the city and being part of, working closely with the, the folks that represent Mojave County, as well as the people that represent the League of Cities, and, and weighing in when appropriate on, on our own, on behalf of Kingman. It's been different with the legislators not around, so you can only catch them one day when they're here and, and, but we've already communicated our, the position of the city on, on many of the issues already. So it's already documented within the system, and so that's a good thing. Now it's just about counting votes, when and if we're part of an effort, a team like the rural, the, the water group. That's, that's something that's, you know, we all work together on that. And just to kind of cut right to some of the, where we are with regard to, you know, the big, the big water bills. And that right now is, you know, 20, you know, Senate Bill 1221, of course, that's the one by Sina Kerr, the chairman of the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee. That, as well as 2587, that is where the governor put, that's Representative Chris Mathis from Tucson. He's the sponsor on it, but that is where the governor put the, the findings of the governor's Rural Water Advisory Group that met in the interim, that, not the governor's, the governor's Water Council that met over the interim. And remember when Sina Kerr and Gail Griffin, some key legislators walked out, well, that 2857 is the governor's bill. It hasn't moved. And 1221 is the Kerr-Griffin bill, the Republican bill, and that hasn't moved. And from what I'm understanding, and, and, and Mr. Walsh, as you know, I talk to Nick Ponder regularly, who represents Mojave County, who's doing a great job for the county and all of the rural groups. You know, he has told me that in so many terms, that those bills are not going to move, you know, Senate Bill 1221, as well as 2857. And there's talk now about a possible special session on water because we're not going to be able to resolve apparently these issues with the legislature and the governor between now and the end of session. Let's say the governor, I mean, the legislature either is going to shut down state government, or they're going to pass a budget in the next 26 days. And so if they, there seems to be this impasse on the water issues that they're not going to be able to reach that deal. And it would be a special session. Personally, I think that is a mistake with regard to the people that want to get something done. I think it kind of falls, and I'm talking about getting things done with regard to home builders in Maricopa and Pinellas Counties, because they're going to lose some leverage, you know, with regard to the budget. And you're going to have some lame duck legislators that aren't really going to care making some decisions on water policy. And I think if, I personally give advantage of rural Arizona in that situation because Governor Hobbs would continue to have our back in that. So that's kind of the overall picture of the big policy discussion in which, you know, Travis Lingefelter, Supervisor Lingefelter, he's part of the discussions, which is a good thing for Kingman and Mojave County. And it's the governor's staff as well as legislative staff and key legislators. And so that's, that's where those big discussions are. Any questions on the big water discussions?
Tom, we don't, I don't think we have any.
Okay, okay, because I can't see you guys, so. Anyway, and with regard to any of the other bills that we had listed, I covered most of them last time, so if there's anything specific you have, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And, and once again, congratulations on a very happy meeting here, giving out good things. And with regard to Rancho Santa Fe, I mean, congratulations, that's awesome. And I don't think I should tell anyone at the legislature that we don't need the 9.9 million for that anymore.
Whoa, 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 that was going to be my question.
Yes, Vice Mayor has a question for you, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll hold your horses, Tom. On that HB 2412, that's where that appropriation is? Okay. And what other, what other projects up in our area are in those appropriations?
It's, we have 8.3 million for Eastern Street, and then 2.9 million for the Airway Avenue, east of Prospect Street, there were some improvements. So we have those, the 9.9 for Rancho Santa Fe, the 8.3 for Eastern Street, and 2.9, and these are the issues that John Gillette has been pushing for. And we continue to encourage him to push for that. A lot of it's going to depend on the revenue numbers. You know, because as of right now, the governor's, has tried to claw back, has listed 500, over 400 million to be clawed back as part of the budget plan. But, you know, many legislators may get some, you know, he's in a position with Biasucci and Borelli to help push to get some, some money there if they indeed get back to the point where they're going to honor the legislation from last year. All of us, we're pushing to, if we're not going to fund it, continue it, you know. So of course, we're, you know, we're pushing hard as you can to get something funded, but you don't want it just to die. You want it to be extended, and that's, that's what will be happening, hopefully.
Well, and that was going to be my next question to you. With these projects, you know, still being in the running, per se, in the appropriations, will you please keep us apprised if that discussion changes? Or we could be more effective if we went down to the Capitol? Or, I mean, I know John is doing what he can and Leo and Sonny, but I, if, if we need some, some influence down there and we need to go talk to them about these projects and how important it is, would you please keep us apprised of that development?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, I, yes, definitely. And I, we may even want to send a letter to the delegation. I'm happy to draft something for you to consider.
Well, I think.
At least.
I'm sorry, but I think that is a great idea. That was going to be a suggestion, but I'd like to see them done individually so that each project has its own economic impact on our community, and we need to state those and what those are. And I feel like three letters are better than one.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, yes, I'm, I'm happy to, I'll need some help on, on more detail other than what it is than on, to go into a little more depth on a full letter, to justify that, that request. So I can work with Mr. Walsh on that. Great idea.
That would be great. Thank you so much. We need to stay on this and be vigilant because we've got to fight for these funds. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, Vice Mayor, yes, that's, we are, we are. And that's regular communications with the Rural Transportation Advisory Council and the budget folks to let them know that we have these projects, when and if we get to a point that they are going to fund some of them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Dorn? Tom, once again, good seeing you via Zoom.
Good to see you.
And thanks again. We appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you in person.
Okay, definitely. Item number 6B, Town Hall Options. Mr. Cooper, our city attorney?
Yes, sir. I'll try and move through this fairly quickly. It's a pretty simple presentation. Annie's putting that up, the second slide. I'm not going to go through background of all these deep, the statutes, but I just want to put the statutes in there just so we're all aware of it, that it's, I'm not the one saying no all the time. It's the statute sometimes. But one of the things is, per statute, we have to make sure when we have a meeting, it's publicly noticed, it's in compliance with the open meeting law, and it goes back to a lot of the agenda. You have to have information listed on the agenda so people know what you're talking about, so they know they can show up, so they aren't going to bypass something. Next, and obviously, we can only talk about what's on the agenda. I'm not too concerned, well, I'm not too concerned because it wouldn't be me violating the open meeting law, but you just always want to be careful about violating the open meeting law. I listed some of the punishments that the statutes allow. It, I'd never, you never see it coming to that unless there's some deliberate action to try and exclude people from participation. The, if you have an inadvertent open meeting law violation, it's usually just an educational program to make sure we don't do it again. Next slide. Again, it talks about, it's the statutes, the public policy, that when you interpret these statutes, you have to interpret them as broadly as possible in favor of open and public meetings. Next slide. The Attorney General opinions, basically just go back and say that same information. If you have questions, I'll answer those questions. Next slide. This is just talking about communication outside of a meeting a little bit, just saying, you know, if you're having discussions and it's less than a quorum of counsel, that's fine, but as soon as you make a quorum, then you kind of run into trouble. So we always want to try to avoid some of those serial communications. Again, it talks about what the Attorney General said is the, the agenda should contain as much information as reasonably necessary, necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided. Next slide. So options, because I know we want to talk about options. The first option is what I would call the staff-driven option, where it's only staff, there's no open meeting law requirements, any topic can be discussed, and then obviously, staff can bring that information back to the council. Next. This is the non-quorum of the council. So this could be anything is, from, you know, the, the mayor having a coffee, whatever they call those programs, as long as it's a non-quorum of the council, the council does not select the, the non-quorum folks, because as soon as the council selects who's going to be there, it becomes a becomes a subcommittee, and the open meeting law takes place. So if we were to take that route, it would be mayor, vice mayor, something along that line, but it'd still be primarily staff-driven to try and avoid the open meeting law entanglement. Last one, which is the one I think you'd all prefer, this would be the quorum of the council. You have your notice meeting requirements, you can't discuss anything unless it's on the agenda. But the idea is to avoid the town hall free-for-all, where anybody can come and ask questions about anything, you can't really do that. So what you'd have to do is trying to tailor it towards a specific topic area. So if you're having quarterly meetings, and you want to do, this quarter, we're going to talk about, you know, streets and transportation issues, that allows you to focus on those type of issues and carry on that general conversation. Again, you're not making a decision that night, but it allows you to interact, which is something I know that frustrates the council with the call to the public, where you can't interact. So I think this is the best option. I'm hoping I get everybody to yes, because I'm always the no guy. But I think this will allow you to do those things that allow you to get more input from the public, a little more relaxed atmosphere, and allow the public to kind of bring at least topics that are related to what we have on the agenda. That makes sense. So that's my very, I'm hoping, very brief discussion on how the open meeting law works and how we can proceed.
Thanks, Carl. Any questions for Mr. Cooper?
I just had a question, just to throw a fourth option in there.
Yeah.
So at the, and this may not be a fourth option, but the quorum of the council, I am in favor of that option. Would we also have department heads available?
Oh, yeah, that would.
So that if the public needs clarification, or, you know, we could bring them up as we do.
Yes, ma'am. I think that would be, that would be the intent. You have the subject matter experts along with the council.
Okay. I, I'm in favor of that option. My comment.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So do you want us, do you want, we need to give you some direction on this?
Well, I don't, I, I.
Or do we, this is more education of how we want to do.
I think this is more educational. I, I think we all know what council is wanting to do. And there might be a point in time where maybe we want to have a discussion about what are the topic areas, and when you want to do these. So that would definitely be coming up in a future.
Okay.
Discussion.
I have a comment.
Counselor Staley.
What I think would work really well is if we just opened up where, for a certain period, citizens could submit the items that they want to discuss, so that we make sure and hit on all of those topics. We know streets is always going to be something that people want updates on or want to talk about. But I think just, if we could schedule a town hall, but then a few weeks ahead of time, open it up and tell the public, okay, if you would like to participate in this town hall, what topics would you personally like to discuss? And that way, it's tailored really to the public, because that's the intention, is being able to have a meeting that's driven by the public, we're able to listen, and better understand what's going on community-wide.
That's a great idea.
Counselor Eric, did you have a comment on that, too?
I was going to say something along the lines of a survey to see what people wanted to talk about. So pretty much the same idea, but my question was, how specific does the topic have to be? Can it be, see, if Kingman related, and just be a free-for-all?
No.
No.
No, it has, you can't just say, because that's the free-for-all, you can't just say city-King related items.
Right.
Because again, that's.
One town in a giant nation?
Yeah. And that's just, that's a huge area, and you need to have some specificity in the agenda, which is why we definitely need to narrow it down a little bit.
Public works, so it would be water and streets, or even more specific. I'm just trying to get a range, by department, by?
I'm going to give you a lawyer answer. It all depends on what we're trying to do. But we will, we can do what we can, we will make sure we incorporate some specificity, but wide enough that we can get a range of options.
When's the next town hall?
I have no idea when the council's going to want to do that, but I would.
It's when we want to put one up.
Yeah.
And of course, the vehicle, of course, the city manager could help us with this, you know, as far as putting some kind of questionnaire out there, as what would like to be discussed. Or do we just do that right now, and then we can set a date for a town hall discussing some of those things?
Well, my first suggestion, that some people are not going to like, is you need to do this, you should do this after the election cycle.
That's true.
Because your election cycle is going to drive, you have to be careful about electioneering, you have to be careful about utilizing city resources in an election that would be looking like you're advocating for a particular individual or a particular ballot issue. So you always want to be careful about these sort of things during the election cycle. And, and having said that, I think the election is coming up fairly quickly anyways, it's going to take a little bit of time to get yourself a town hall set up, a location where you're going to want to do it, and get your topics lined up as well. So I, I guess that's my suggestion, is.
Well, Carl, you bring up a good point. Of course, the election would be, you know, the primary election.
Correct.
But should we, but sometimes things don't get decided, which means it would push it back farther after the general election.
I, I would suspect you're going to probably have a very successful primary election, that this won't be an issue. That's my, my belief. But if that was to come to pass, that can be a discussion, we, we come back with council.
So we would, okay. So council needs to think of a consideration of sometime after the primary election, then, which is July 30th, correct? Clerk Meredith? So some date after that point. Of course, depending on the results of that primary election also.
Right. And we're not making any decisions tonight, so this is just something you guys can think about.
Right.
And share that information with the city manager.
I think we had agreed to have another council retreat in the fall. So I would like to see having a town hall prior to the retreat, so we can hear from the citizens, and then that can help drive the conversation that we have in the retreat and for our planning for next year. Please. Thank you.
City Manager, I think you have an idea what we need then.
Mr. Mayor, absolutely. Staff will bring back a recommendation to council on, on timing and that, and as well as the timing for a retreat as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very well. Item number 6C, Industrial Park Rail Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Tonight, I am here to, where do I get in here? Sorry. Okay, so Economic Development commissioned the Regional Economic Development Center out of Yavapai College. Ryan Jones was the person who worked on this report. He is with us online. So he will be available to answer any questions that you might have about this report after I'm done. And what we're trying to do is let you guys know what the economic impact of rail is, and the value that the rail in the industrial park brings to our industrial park in our city. So Kingman Terminal Railway was, has been operating in the industrial park since 2012. And they maintain all the track throughout the industrial park. They transfer rail cars between BNSF and all the rail user businesses within the industrial park. Now, that's either switching, bringing loads in that BNSF drops off, taking cars out. So there's a variety of ways that that happens. Oh, I am so sorry. I am Terry Curtis with Economic Development, and I am an Economic Development Project Manager. Sorry about that. Okay, so the other thing that Kingman Terminal Railway has, they have safety goals that they have to meet. So every, they go throughout the park and inspect the rail all the time. Monthly, they have to provide reports to the Economic Development Department, and those reports will say what they had to repair, when they did the repair, if they had any injuries, if there was any derailments, and were those derailments human caused. Just a note of good stuff, there has been no injuries, no derailment until recently, and it was very small. But there hasn't been any injuries or anything out at the industrial park on the track for the last five years. I went back and looked at all the statistics. So they have to also maintain certain assets out at the rail park, that is, two engines. They currently have three engines out at the park. They maintain over three miles of track out there. So their job is to make sure that the carloads, storage, and switch moves are all taken care of. In 2023, we had 2,301 cars that were moved. In 2024, they're looking at 2,842 cars to be moved. That's over a 23% increase. With that being said, our revenue in 2023 for the, from the operations, and I'll explain that in just a second, was $85,000. And if we adjust it by the 23.5% increase, then we will be looking at an increase of revenue up to $105,000. That revenue is based on a percentage of what Kingman Terminal Railway charges their customers. We earn 4%, and that comes back to the city and goes into the airport and industrial park funds. So you can't stop and look at the industrial park without looking at what some of the uses are, and how the, how our customers and what they're saying about it. So most of them take the imports that are coming in of their product to create the products that they're manufacturing out at the industrial park. There's not a lot of rail that's going back out right at the moment. They have, they are saying that it's crucial for them to have the rail there. It's vile to their business and their supply chain. It is, trucking costs them more than 1.5 times the amount of what it costs for rail. If it wasn't for the rail, they wouldn't be here in Kingman. And that they save over 50% off of their freight costs by having the rail out there. So what are the benefits of having the rail out at the industrial park? There's obviously the cost savings. It is vital for business attraction as what, as well. It increases the property values out there. There's job growth, supply chain efficiency, investor appeal, and ability to handle larger loads that are not geared towards going over the highways, and business expansion, and safety and traffic reduction. So what does this mean for economic development? The direct impact is that 13% of the businesses, which is 15 of the businesses, participate in having rail access and using that. These companies employ approximately 398 employees, and those 398 employees support a payroll of $10.7 million. That is in direct impact. The total of indirect and direct impact, you can see here, is 622 jobs, $33 million in payroll that's supported, and that causes an economic impact gain of $214 million. It definitely says that our rail means a lot to this community and our businesses that are out there. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Appreciate that. Okay. Any other comments or questions as far as that presentation? Very good. Number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Walsh, picking on you first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as announcements, I would just like to invite the public out to, and sorry to steal everybody's thunder on this, but out to the first Friday, we'll have the ribbon cutting of the streetscape. It's a very, another very exciting thing going on here in town. So that's all I have to share. Thank you.
You stole my thunder, Tim. Thank you. Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counselor Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Ward?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Staley? Counselor Eric?
I would like to invite everyone on Fridays, while we're preparing.
Great, thank you. We can, we can't talk about that much. It's another big moment in Kingman history. We appreciate that. Vice Mayor?
Well, I'm going to switch it up. I, I, everybody's talking about the ribbon cutting, and it's great and wonderful. I also want to recognize Bullhead City for the bridge grand opening that they're doing on Friday. So they are opening up that bridge to the public. So it's a big, huge celebration. And although we're celebrating over here for all of our reasons, they'll be celebrating over there, the, the big, big bridge, big bridge, big new bridge.
And of course, that starts at 8:00 AM, where you can walk across the bridge, but the ceremony will be at 10:00 AM in the morning down in Bullhead City at that point. Yes, Counsel?
I'd just like to add something to that. Just so you know, that bridge is called the Silver and Copper Bridge, because Nevada's the silver state, and we're the copper state. So it was a joint effort with that meaning.
That explains the name. Thank you, Counselor Savage. Appreciate that. Anything else, Vice Mayor? Well, to go along with what our, our city manager and Counselor Eric said, of course, as far as the ribbon cutting for our Beale Street Improvement Project, also, it is First Friday, and of course, all the events that happen with around First Friday, and it's the Beale Street Block Party. And so, big events happening downtown this Friday. So please try to attend if you can. Thank you. Okay. Any future requests for items to be brought before City Council from staff? Okay, seeing none. Then I think we, we don't even need a motion. I think we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight.